...that you want to talk about, you can hit Ctrl+Plus again and it'll continue to zoom in.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to escape to get out of that.
Mm-hmm.
And let me just eject. No. I'm going to eject your flash drive so we can have that back.
I don't want to go here without it.
Yes. People have tried. That's why I like to just make a copy and that way they don't have to worry about.
I've donated a few.
Yeah. So we'll stop.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so I hope you're looking at your microphone.
So I hear.
Um, I'm sorry, we are trying to get work on, but hopefully it'll be later this week. It'll be fixed, not this evening. Um, the, uh, there's a handheld microphone here and one of the chairs, so we'll just have to kind of chair them. And it's a good way for the chair to recognize you, we'll send the microphone down your way if you're sick. Um, the microphones that you're going to be using are battery powered, so we ask that if you don't speak, and it's a funny thing to turn it off to save the battery, I mean, hopefully they will last. They are not powered by a 49 volt battery and hopefully that will last two hours and hopefully this meeting will be less than that.
That's right.
So, um, just wanted to make sure if you, and these microphones, you can, um, might need to be a little closer than. And you know you're going to be. Okay. None of the microphones are normal. Yeah, there's only two unfortunately. Um, and.
Can you?
Exactly, here.
Can you pull it out of the stand?
You can pull it out of the stand, but you might get tired of holding it, that's why I gave the stand to you. Yeah, right now there's, to turn it on, there's a power problem. Power problems. Those are the only two that you actually switch. But she's very powerful.
Test one. Test one, two, got it?
So, um, you'll have to chair. It's a good way for the chair to recognize you, send the microphone down. We won't stop you, but it's, I afford the entire.
Karaoke was not big in your childhood.
Plus back to.
Second childhood, yes.
So if I break out of some karaoke, y'all don't be disappointed now.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the city, that the elected official have the final say on any issue brought forth tonight. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those wishing to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Each side, those wishing to speak in favor of an item and those wishing to speak in opposition to an item, will have 10 minutes to present each side. The time will be divided amongst all persons wishing to speak. If you are here opposing rezoning tonight, you should be aware of what's called a protest petition. A protest petition will be, can be very helpful to those residents who live in a rezoning area. Please consult the planning department staff for any details on a protest petition and they will be happy to help you. You should also, you should keep in constant touch with the planning department as to where your case will go before the elected officials for a final vote. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Bealan. Commissioner Boit. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Gibbs. Vice Chair Harris. Chair Jones. Commissioner Huff. Commissioner Lamb. Commissioner Paget. Commissioner Smudget. Smusset.
Uh, President.
Com- Commissioner Whitley.
President.
Commissioner Wonders. Commissioner Walters.
All right, thank you. I did receive an email from Commissioner Davis today requesting an excused absence and Commissioner Huff may be running late or may be absent, she's out of town. So we'll note that. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Pat Young with the Planning Department, no adjustments tonight, but I can certify for the record that all public hearing items before you have been advertised in accordance with law and affidavits are on file with the Planning Department, it's not affect.
All right, thank you. Yes. Yes, sir.
Get the mic.
Can you get a mic? Let's turn the mic.
A question about, um, the update, updated, um, phone numbers, email addresses of commissioners.
Yes. She, she sent them out shortly after that meeting again. So, we'll make a note to send you, um, a copy of them.
Give me a chance to look for it, okay.
Okay. Can we make a note of that to send Redmond Willie a copy?
All right, thank you.
Personal delivery. Okay. All right. So can we have approval of the minutes? Ma'am? We have some technical difficulties, so we have to pass the mic.
We had an email request from APA asking us to participate in their newsletter. Did anybody else get that email? Did anyone want to participate?
Thank you. So, to answer your question, um, actually, we can move that down to new business and we can come back to it. Yes? Okay, so we'll put that under 6B for new business? All right, so now we can go back to, uh, four, which is the approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, so moved them properly second, seconded by Commissioner Smusky. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand?
Minutes has passed 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. So, let's move down to, uh, we open the public hearing for Corners at Briar Creek. For zoning case.
Good evening, I'm Scott Whitehead from the Planning Department. This case is, despite what it says on my slide, is Z1224A, the Corners at Briar Creek initial. This is a, an initial zoning request for a, and some parcels of land that are proposed for annexation. This is actually fairly common, but not something that the Planning Commission sees very often because back in 2005, the Planning Commission passed a resolution saying you recommended approval of any initial zoning of newly annexed land in which the proposed city zoning was the same as the county zoning. However, this particular case is primarily in Wake County, so that particular situation doesn't apply, so a Planning Commission recommendation on the initial zoning would be required. The site is, uh, the portion in Durham County is owned, our rural residential, and then there's a myriad of zoning districts in the city of Raleigh's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And the proposal is to apply an initial city of Durham zoning of rural residential, which is the least intense zoning allowed in the tier based on the size of the lot, which is the city council policy for newly annexed properties. It's about approximately 121 acres. Here's a context map of the site. The very northern tip is in Durham County near the recently approved Del Webb Carolina Arbers project. Uh, most of the site is in Wake County, which is currently in the city of Raleigh's zoning jurisdiction only. As you see from the aerial map, although this site is primarily undeveloped, it is near the fairly intensely developed Briar Creek area in, within Raleigh's city limits. So, staff does determine that the request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but is consistent with the city policy regarding initial zoning of newly annexed land. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have one person signed up to speak, and that's Patrick Biker.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Biker, I live at 2614 Stewart Drive here in Durham. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group and our office address is 630 Davis Drive in Durham. I'm just here to say that, uh, our firm is representing the property owners for this rezoning request and will be bringing forward a, a rezoning for commercial, mixed use, and multifamily on this 121 acres and will look forward to presenting that to you, uh, probably sometime this spring. Look forward to talking with you about that. Thank you for your time tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. If we have anyone up here wishing to speak, any questions? Can we get a motion? Oh, grab you. Is it on, microphone?
I'll make a motion and then we approve these.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve zoning case 1300027.
Sorry. Let the witness up here.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair. I move zoning case 1200024A.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded by Mr. Smusky, seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand?
Motion has passed 11 to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move down to 5B, 54 Plaza?
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the Planning Department. This is the zoning map change case Z130002154Plaza. The applicant is Durham Imperial Investors. The site is within the county's jurisdiction, however, this is also part of a consolidated land use item for annexation consideration as one item, so we've reviewed it under the city's jurisdiction and regulations. The request is from the existing zoning designation of commercial neighborhood to commercial general with a development plan for 5.436 acres and the proposed use is for 33,000 square feet of non-residential. The site is in the suburban tier at 5082 and 5904 South Miami Boulevard, which is the west side of South Miami Boulevard, north of Searls Court and just north of the Durham and Wake County line. And it is bounded on the west side by railroad right of way. The request does meet the standards of the commercial general district as identified on this table, as well as the associated development plan, which we'll get to. Here are the existing conditions of the site as shown on the development plan. There, there is some floodway fringe to the rear of the property, closest to the railroad right of way. Uh, there's a site of a demolished house towards the frontage of the site. It is primarily undeveloped, tree and tree covered. The proposed condition shows, um, the standards that satisfy the elements of a development plan. We do have our site access points, tree coverage area, as the asterisks represent tree preservation and then supplemental tree preservation will also be on the site. You'll see a building envelope, um, a proposal that includes a reduction in the width of the buffer, which is typical, it has to be represented on the development plan to have the ability to request that at the site plan stage. The commitments are a maximum of 33,000 square feet of non-residential floor area, the four site access points, two of them are across access and two are onto South Miami Boulevard, a maximum impervious surface of 88 percent, as well as the tree coverage preservation. The graphic commitments are the access points, tree coverage areas, buffer location and reduction were shown and the roadway improvements as indicated. There's a number of design commitments that satisfy our design commitment guidelines addressed here and the buildings will face the street, be oriented to the street. The request is consistent with our future land use map of our comprehensive plan and as well as the applicable policies. And staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. We have four people signed up to speak. Have our Brandon White, Jordan Brewer, Sal Mizara, and Carrie Finley. So if you want to speak, you can come to the podium. Together, you have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Chairman, fellow commissioners, um, my name is Sal Mizara. I'm a land planner with Kimley-Honan Associates at 333 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Just briefly to let you know that I'm here on behalf of the applicant and I'm here with some members of our development team, our consultant team, primarily to answer any questions. Uh, we appreciate staff's presentation and think they've covered all the, all the pertinent points. So at this point, we, we look forward to responding to any questions you may have. Uh, we think it's a great project and a commercial corridor that'll provide really needed services for this area and it's very consistent with your land use documents. So with that, uh, we will just be available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. If we don't have anyone else wishing to speak, I'll bring it back before the commissioners. Do you have any commissioners that have any questions? Uh, Mr. Smusky, pass him.
Is this on?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, I was wondering if this is for staff or for the applicant? Can you clarify what the proffer is for the bike lane?
Good evening, Earl Luellen with Kimley-Honan Associates. Uh, just this afternoon, we made some clarifications with NCDOT staff regarding this. We are willing to proffer, uh, construction of additional pavement along Miami Boulevard that would accommodate a future bike lane and we can work with the wording of that committed element with staff.
So then, is that going to be across the whole frontage of your property with Miami Boulevard?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Does that satisfy the Planning Department's requirements?
Yes, again, Pat Young with the Planning Department. Bill Judge can elaborate, but that, that's what we requested. Uh, the proffer that was just made was for the entire frontage. It's been our practice, even though the improvement is just the turn lane, that they have the equipment deployed and it's, it's pretty straightforward to make those improvements and the, and the bike plan calls for it. So, we appreciate the applicant's additional proffer.
Yeah, Bill Judge for Transportation. I was just gonna confirm that that would resolve the transportation concern listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Can we get a motion? Pass him the microphone again.
My, my voice will carry it.
No, that's okay. Just get a microphone, help us all out.
I move approval of case number Z1300021.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure if that was heard, but.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that motion includes the additional proffer.
Restate your motion and include the initial, the additional proffer.
Is this on?
No.
Okay, so pass this mic down one more time.
Here we go. Here we go. I move approval of the case number Z1300021 with the inclusion of the proffer that we heard tonight that includes a bike lane across the entire frontage of the property in, along Miami Boulevard.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All right. So, all those in favor, it's been moved improperly second, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand?
Motion has carried 11 to zero.
Just for clarification, we're gonna recognize anybody who opposed to it. So, no opposition, so. All right. All right, thank you. We're gonna move down to item 5C, Bethpage Village Revisions.
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the Planning Department. This request is case Z1300030, Bethpage Village Revisions. The applicant is John Armic Adams. It is within the city's jurisdiction and the request is to change the commitments of the existing development plan. So our review was limited in scope to just the, the commitments and I'll go over that here briefly. The acreage of the site is 407.27 acres and the existing zoning district, which will also be the proposed zoning district, is planned development residential 4.733, industrial light with a development plan and commercial general with a development plan. The site is in the suburban tier, it's in the northwest quadrant of Page Road and Chin Page Road intersection and the existing development plan, just for context, proposes 1,300 units in the planned development residential designation, as well as 50,000 square feet of office and 150,000 square feet of commercial. The applicant, um, has three requests. The first is a modification of three commitments, which is number three, 13 and 14. The first one, number three, is adding, um, that the school, the school, um, proffer, donation proffer, will, uh, be exempt from payment of the fee for, um, what was previously proffered. So, they're, they're adding, uh, again, the exemption not to pay the school proffer for housing that is governed by the Housing of Older Persons Act. And the second modification of a commitment element is number 13 and they are changing the language for the commitment for some site amenities, um, including the, the addition of words like active recreation as opposed to usable open space. They're proposing a swimming pool instead of a, a specific type of pool, a junior Olympic pool that, that was stricken, as well as the other commitments you can see here, clarifying what amenities will be provided. The third modification of a commitment element is to number 14, uh, clarifying again, some of the amenities that will be on the site that will be provided prior, prior to the 500th certificate of occupancy. And you can see that the changes, they're trading out a soccer or football field for other amenities. The element, and the second request of the proposal is to strike, uh, commitment number 15 that's on the existing plan, which is to remove, remove protection of a cemetery and provide open space around that cemetery. Again, they are proposing to remove that commitment. In its place, request number three is to add a commitment. Um, the full, uh, language of this commitment is in the staff report as well as on the attached development plan, but essentially adding age restriction commitment for, for the residential units in accordance with the Federal Housing for Older Persons Act. And you can reference the full entirety of that language. It, it provides, um, an enforcement mechanism as well as timing for, for how to, um, how we will monitor that. The request is consistent with the future land use map, which designates the site as low to medium density residential, recreation, open space, industrial and commercial. And staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances and I'll be available for any questions.
All right, thank you. I have one person, one person signed up to speak, that's Bob Zimwalt.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Bob Zimwalt with McAdams. My, uh, address is 2905 Meridian Parkway in Durham and I'm Director of Planning and Design with McAdams. I've been involved with this project since initial design back in probably '04 and I'm here representing Reader and Partners tonight and, uh, Scott Lay was intending to come, but he has a sick wife and a sick kid, so he's home taking care of them both. Um, just to give you a short history, Bethpage, 400 acre master plan, as Amy mentioned, originally approved back in '06, included the 1,300 residential units. It was 500,000 square feet of office and 150,000 square feet of commercial. Uh, due to the downturn in the economy, it sorta sat idle for quite a while and now Reader and Partners is pretty excited to have a age restricted home builder step up and wanna move forward with about half the community. So we've actually already submitted a site plan for 650 age restricted, um, detached lots. So about half the residential in the community, it was submitted November 12th and we're addressing first round comments right now. So in order to sort of adapt this application from what it was originally designed for back in '06, we just want to make the amendments to the text commitments that Amy's mentioned and, you know, just to quickly summarize, one, the voluntary school impact, not proposing to change any of the commitments for the remaining 600 and some odd lots, everything single family, town, home, multifamily, they're gonna still volunteer the same $1,000 per single family, 500 per, I believe it was 500 per townhouse and multifamily. 300, thank you, Amy. Uh, all we're asking for is to add one more category. Since age restricted housing doesn't contribute students to the school system, we just want to have an additional option for this portion of the community to not make that payment. Uh, second, um, we're just, as Amy mentioned, just making some modifications to some of the recreational amenities. Back, the first developer who wanted to do this job, they originally wanted a soccer field. There just hasn't been any demand for that and so this community is gonna have, the bulk of its residents will be. of its residents will be older folks, 55 and older, and so we just wanted to add some better options to satisfy the rec. We're not reducing the amount of open space, nothing like that. The third one, the preservation of the cemetery in the northwest quadrant of the site, you know, with further investigation of that cemetery, there's one grave out there, and it's in pretty poor condition, and so the developer of the age-restricted community just thought that could cause some concerns or be troublesome to a resident who owned a house backing up right to that one grave, sitting behind their, their house. So, there are mechanisms for advertising and relocating a gravesite in accordance with state and local statutes, so they just want the opportunity to be able to do that, that's all. And then finally, as Amy mentioned, we wanna be able to apply the age-restricted vehicle trip generation counts to this portion of the community. There's no changes to any of the roadway improvements under the zoning, they all stay the same. It would just allow us to phase them a little more accurately with what type of traffic's generated from an age-restricted community, which is much fewer peak hour vehicle trips. That's all I have. I appreciate your time, I'm here for any questions. And I've also got Earl here from, Earl Uellen from Kimble Horn, if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have anyone else, any commissioners wishing to speak? Mr. Harrison Smutsky, and Gibbs.
Just one question for you. Are you far enough along to know what the market value of the unit cost of those?
I don't know. I wish my builder were here. This is, the way we like, they like to feel about this community is, it's like a step up from sort of what the Del Webb communities are doing around the community. So, if you look at what's going on in North Durham or over in Cary, it's just a bit of a notch above that with finishes and, you know, so, but I'm not sure about the pricing, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, but he's first.
So, the first question I had is about the cemetery, and there are procedures to follow, and there are agencies, you know, so that you can contact, and we know that there's only, I mean, there may be one gravestone, but there may be other bodies.
Absolutely, yes. So, they would have to come out and identify all that, and we would propose to do it. Correct. To be honest with you, they don't even know if they're gonna do it yet. The proposal we have in front of the, on the site plan, doesn't affect it at all, but it's just, we're concerned that at some point, it's in the last phase of the project, if people start going, "I don't wanna live right next to that," we want the option to be able to move it to another portion on the property, or somewhere where it's in an open space field or something, if that makes sense.
That makes sense, but, and it won't be this group that has to police that.
Sure.
The second thing is, in the part in, was it number 14, where it says, "One of the following," and it'll either be two tennis courts or two bocce courts, would the staff interpret one of each to be okay? I mean, for diversity, I mean, does it have to just be that, or? One tennis court, one bocce court? Or a multipurpose field and a bocce court?
Sure, I understand the question. The beginning of it, it says, "contain at least one of the following," so a strict read would say it would have to be two tennis courts or two bocce courts?
That would be a strict read, and I'm wondering if that's the strict read that you would enforce, or would you be more lenient?
Yeah, the answer to the question is, at the time of site plan, which may be several years from now, the planning director at that time will have to interpret that provision, and so there's really no way to answer it definitively, 'cause it's, it's that, future planning dir, maybe the current one, depending on when the site plan comes in, will have to interpret that. I personally would interpret it liberally and allow it to be one of each, but a strict read does say only one or the other. I just, I have no way of answering that. Unequivocally, the applicant, if they, if they so choose, can clarify here, and we'll be happy to accept that if that's desired, acceptable to the applicant.
What I would say is, it's not far off. The only reason that whole rec center, it's a big rec center, this is gonna be like a 15,000 to 20,000 square foot building. The only reason it's not in our current site plan is client design is currently working on the clubhouse architecture, but I have the plan in my office, it'll be in in a couple months, and it's got four tennis courts, eight or 10 bocce courts, an Olympic-sized pool. I mean, it's so far above and beyond us that we'll have no trouble hitting all of it.
The most important question I had before my time runs out is about the funding for the schools.
Yes.
Okay, so, I think what I heard staff say is that there's a federal program that would, that would allow the people not to pay those?
They're not required, they're not required school impact fees, they were volunteered by the developer in the original zoning. So, we're just adding a category so that, 'cause the concern originally was, look at the impact this 1,300-unit community's gonna have on the school system. So, to remedy that, we volunteered a payment of $1,000 per single, 300 per townhouse or multifamily.
But then, then the owners of those townhouses and homes would then end up paying...
The developer pays it.
Well, but they would end up paying taxes to the community that would include school taxes, right? My point is, my point is, there are a lot of people in this community that don't, that don't contribute to the students in this community, okay? But yet, we pay school taxes because we think it's a public good.
Sure.
Okay? And so, I have a concern that, you know, the people in this new development should be contributing to the public good as well.
And so, they are paying taxes, right?
Well, that, that's correct. They are paying taxes, and I just wanted to verify that, but, so I did wanna think about this funding mechanism for the school.
Yeah, all I would say is, the, the way the commitment is, is derived, it's not really a federal program, there's a federal definition to what is an eligibility age-restricted community, there are certain legal requirements, the federal law specifies. The plat that goes along with the, the final recordation of the lots for this development will have to identify the units that are under the auspices of that federal law, and if this is approved as written, when the building, when the builder comes in for a building permit for that lot, if it's under a plat under this, under this federal law regarding age-restricted housing, then there'd be no proffer required.
Right.
But, but taxation would apply just like any other property in the county.
Well, my, okay, so my concern is that the schools still be funded. I think we're gonna have some discussion on that, and I'll think about that before we have the final.
Okay. I mean, the thing, you cannot have any children that live in this portion of the community according to this type of housing, so there will be no impacts to the schools from these 650 units. None, other than they're paying taxes and not utilizing the schools.
Okay, I'm out. Okay. Your last statement has kind of confused me, which is not, not hard to do. Are, are all of these, all of these units are not going to be age-restricted? Is that, my, my understanding was that part of the development would be for age-restricted, and then...
That's right.
And that leads me to my question, which was, have you determined yet what, which of these pods, or which pod, or would be devoted to that type of housing, or is it gonna be interspersed, or?
Yeah, it's pretty much everything except Pod A. Okay, if you're looking at the plan, the ones up on Chin Page Road, A and C, those are commercial, so right up along the intersection of Page and Chin Page. The next pod back, Pod D, that's office.
Right.
Pod G is residential, Pod F is residential, which is just above the roundabout, and then to the west, Pod E is office, everything else is age-restricted. So, everything from that sort of Pod F to the north is all age-restricted. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And this looks like a, a good mix of commercial, and I'm assuming whatever is going here, and this is just my curiosity, would this, these things be to serve not only the, this community, but everybody else?
The, the commercial?
Yeah, the commercial.
I mean, that, yeah, that was the idea, that, you know, the only other place to, you know, get groceries or whatever, is you've gotta go over to Briar Creek. There's really no other grocery shopping really close to here. It doesn't, that's not to say it would be a grocery store, it's just whatever the market will demand, but they're hoping for some sort of, you know, little local grocer, you know, some restaurants or something like that, but the housing will start to draw some of the, the demand for that once it starts moving forward.
Sure, and that, that sort of in my mind would develop a village-type of atmosphere, and I am assuming, well, I, I know, everything will be ADA compliant and all that with, considering the age risk.
Right. What, part of the, one of the things you guys don't have the benefit of is all the other things that went into the plan years ago. Some of the other commitments, there's three miles of trails that the project's building, so they're really wanting to make this a walkable, you know, sort of knit-together community, allowing people to walk up to the village center, have, you know, there's really, there's actually another 500,000 square feet of office approved right next door, there's a million, million square feet of office just kinda right in here to go with all this residential.
I know I'm out of time, but just one quick question. I think I remember in here that there was a, a bus stop?
Yes.
That was, would that, would that be along?
The, the commitment that we made was, we will reach out to TTA and DATA, and at any time during the entire life of the project, that they want one along here, we'll build it for them. But the problem now is, there's no bus lines here. So, it's funny you ask that, 'cause today I reached out to our case planner to ask them who I should talk to at DATA. I suspect they're gonna say, "We don't have a need right now," but this project's gonna be building for probably eight or 10 years, so every time a site plan comes in, we will ask DATA or TTA, "Do, do you want the stop, and if so, where do you want it?" And we'll build it. But I would imagine at some point, they'll probably want one up at the entrance on Chin, on Page, and they'll probably want one, I would imagine, when the commercial starts getting built, probably down by the commercial, and then we would do it at that point.
This is an encouraging development, I think.
Thanks.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes. It was my understanding in reading this that these were impact fees and not taxes. Is that right? That's, is that right?
The school, the school fees?
If it ain't.
The, there's no school impact fees in Durham, so everyone who lives in Durham County would pay taxes, and some portion of that goes toward the schools.
Right.
These were voluntary proffers made during the zoning back in 2006.
Right.
Yeah.
And half of the development would be, they will not be exempt, only the senior...
That's right.
Senior citizens...
Right.
Will be exempt.
Correct, that's what we're asking for.
Right. I would, I would ask my colleagues to support this measure, and I'm ready to carry, get one.
Thank you. I, I have some concerns with the school fees, and a question of staff. My concern has to do with sort of longer-term policy among this commission and among the city in general, having to do with impact fees and development that affects the schools in particular, and so my question is to staff is, could you give the commission a sense of what Durham's current precedents are with respect to these voluntary impact fees? Have we, as a city, set a particular policy direction with regard to how these impact fees get established? I understand certainly that these are voluntary by the developer, and that we're talking about something completely different from taxes, I understand that, but if you could give me and the other commissioners a good sense of the precedent?
Sure. Pat Young again with the Planning Department. As you alluded to, Commissioner Lamb, and I think Mr. Zemwalt did, to my knowledge, there's not any jurisdiction in North Carolina that has legal authorization to charge non-voluntary required impact fees for schools. Durham does, does have authority and does collect impact fees for other improvements, including transportation and recreation, but there is a longstanding practice going back at least 20 year, or at least 15 years, probably closer to 20, of voluntary donations for school improvements to, directly to DPS, associated especially with large residential developments such as this one. I'll look to staff to look at kind of an average amount, it's varied. Typically 500 per unit, so this is certainly 100, 1,000 per single-family, 300 per townhouses is in that range. There's not explicit policy directions, since this is strictly voluntary proffer. We, we don't have a policy direction on that, but there has been a longstanding practice. And then, we really don't have a lot of experience with large-scale age-restricted communities. Del Webb was the first very large one. I know there was a few others over the last several years. What's the one out on, off of Farrington?
The Epcun?
Chapwood, and then there's the Culp Arbor.
There you go, yeah.
And I don't believe any of, I don't believe any of those types of developments that are age-restricted made school proffers. So, what's being requested here is consistent with practice, and there's not any direct policy guiding this.
Okay, thank you, that's exactly what I was after. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Question for staff. Which department within the city has the jurisdiction for issuing any citations regarding, I guess, breaking the age-restricted covenants?
Yeah, that would be the Planning Department. What we would require is a periodic, I believe it's yearly, certification from the HOA that they're, they're enforcing the covenants as, as recorded. So, that, that is the zoning enforcement division of the Planning Department, which is under my supervision.
Okay, so my question is, have, as a city, have we ever issued a violation for such matter?
No, we, again, we haven't had any, to my knowledge, the, the first time we had, and staff can correct me if I'm misspeaking, specific commitments in, on a development plan that directly pertain to age-restricted aspect was the Del Webb. I, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any others that had commitments that directly pertained to, again, I'm looking at staff, the age-restricted aspect. There are other age-restricted communities, but I don't believe that there were essentially specific commitments tied to that, like there are for this development and for Del Webb. And we certainly intend to enforce Del Webb, and it's just at the beginning stages, there's maybe 40 or 50 homes being under construction now.
Okay. So, it's uncharted territory for the city of Durham, basically?
It somewhat is, but we, we feel confident that it's, it's enforceable as possible, as it could possibly be. We, we made it clear to council, and I think to the Plan Commission with the Del Webb project, that there's always some risk, it's very difficult to enforce against an HOA, for example, that goes defunct, inoperable, no longer appoints members, et cetera, but as long as the HOA stays solvent and the development stays viable, it's, it's as enforceable as anything else we have.
Okay, just wondered.
Sure.
Oh, okay, Mr. Pageant had a question.
Can you hear me now? All right, got it. I'm getting back to the cemetery thing, and like you said, you don't know how many's in there, it might be one tombstone, there may be 20 people in there.
Sure.
And, and they can determine, I guess, somehow, who, what, where, when, and all that. And I know you thought maybe move it at a later time, oh, when doing that, there's gonna be some families involved in that, I would assume, and I, and I guess, for me, if I have a family member in there, my concern is, they were there...
Sure.
That the family chose him to be there, and, and I guess the laws protect cemeteries and all the things that go with it, but I don't know that, I'd want one of my loved ones just picked up, moved like, like a mobile home.
And, and that's why I asked...
Hold on, Commissioner Smutsky, hold on, we'll give you the mic.
I mean, but that's my thought, and I, and I don't know, are we taking in consideration the family's feelings and thoughts about this? And I'm not talking about compensation or check, what I'm talking about is, how do we deal with the emotions of, of a mother who has a son, or the emotions?
Well, I can, I can answer that. If one person says they don't wanna move, we're done, we won't even do it. That's just, that's kinda, it's, to me, they're so old that... That's just, that's kind of, it's, to me, they're so old that our, our belief is probably that there's nobody left who would know. But this isn't that important, to be honest with you. If people here or the council says, "We don't want you to do this," we'll just take it right off, because it's not that important. It's just something we want to have the option to do it, but if it becomes a problem, we'll just withdraw it.
Well, that, that answers my question. That's all I want. I'm just, that was one of them questions that I'm sitting here thinking. If I don't ask it, then I wonder, you know, what the answer is.
Well, it almost sounds bad for us to ask it, and I knew that going in.
And that's all I wanted to follow up on you. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Whitley?
I move that we pass seven, I'm, I'm sorry. I move that we pass Z1300030.
Second.
It was moved in properly second by Commissioner Harris. All who favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Any opposition?
Motion has passed 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. We'll move down to seven, no, 6A. Any announcements?
Mr. Chair, for next month, there's a, a series of items related to the Rougemont plan scheduled and one additional zoning case.
All right, thank you. And another announcement, Commissioner Beechwood is no longer with us, and I've appointed Commissioner Davis, I mean, David Harris, Commissioner David Harris, to the Joint City County Planning Committee, better known as the JCCPC. Yes, another acronym. So that's, that's it, and he accepted that appointment. We thank him for it. And the other one was 6B, which was Commissioner Bynum's question about the publication. I'll pass you the mic, and you can restate your question or your comment. Oh, yes, Commissioner Harris is excused at this point.
I just wondered if others had received this email from APA and if people wanted to participate or not.
I received the email.
Okay.
So I think we all might have received it. Typically, let's do a question to Pat. When we, when we get requests like that, what is the precedent, if you will, to participate in things of that sort?
Yeah, it's a, a good question. It's the first time in my tenure that we've received a request quite like that. We're certainly happy to support y'all coordinate. I think they asked for a photo, and we'd certainly be happy to do a write-up that you all could edit or evaluate. I mean, we'll be happy to support that if, if you like. You all certainly work hard and deserve recognition and credit. And if you all want to do it, we'll be happy to, to assist. There, there's really no specific precedent. Again, I think this is probably, I think this, my understanding is this is kind of a new initiative by the Planning Association to highlight the work of citizen planners such as yourselves.
Thank you. Do we have, should we have any discussion on that, move forward? Do we do it, do we not? Yes, I'm open to it. Okay. For me, I think anytime somebody reaches out from the outside looking in, trying to figure out, it can't do anything but help us kind of spread the message of what any planning commission throughout the state does. So if we have an organization that is interested in what planning does, then I think we're kind of, don't we have to, but I kind of feel obligated that we are of a public interest and we are public servants. So we have that request. I think we, we probably really need to look at that, whether it's one group photo or whatever it might be. So I wholeheartedly support that. So whatever we can do to make it happen, I'm, I'm with it. Thank, any other comment on it? No. So what we'll do is, I can get a motion as a group as to what we're doing, and we'll either do it all or we'll not do it at all. So we can get a motion and perhaps have a vote on it if we don't have any other further discussion on it. I'll make the motion that we go ahead and do that. Okay, so moved in properly second. All who favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. One oppose?
The motion is carried 10 to 0.
Okay, so I'll reach out to the author of that email and just tell him we agree to it and if there's anything in particular that we may need to do prior to doing it. Anything else? No? Yes, sir?
Now, we're not giving, we're not put anything in the newsletter that we have not endorsed before the public.
Correct.
Right?
So based on how it's playing out in my mind and kind of what Mr. Young alluded to is, any write-up concerning the planning commission will be approved by all members. To my knowledge, they have, they were not asking for individual interviews. They just kind of want to do a spotlight on the Durham City County Planning Commission.
No problem.
Makes sense? Okay.
It, it was asked.
Okay. All right, thank you. So anything else? If all hearts and minds are clear, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.